I'd like to call. Am I on yet?
Yes.
Okay, we'll try this again. Good morning. And we'll call to order the meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. It is April 19th, and welcome to your boardroom. And we will start with a roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Supervisor Michael.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Long.
Thank you. If we could rise for a moment of affirmation and then a pledge of allegiance to be led by Supervisor Flynn.
Ready?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Affirmation first. Okay. "Empower me to be a bold participant rather than a timid saint in waiting in the difficult ordinariness of now, to exercise the authority of honesty rather than to defer to power or deceive to get it; to influence someone for justice rather than impress anyone for gain; and by grace, to find treasures of joy, of friendship, of peace, hidden in the fields of the daily you give me to plow." Supervisor Flynn?
Yes. Please join me in a salute to the flag. Ready to get my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
So motion is second to accept the minutes of our Tuesday, April 12th, meeting. Hearing no objection. Hearing no objection. So ordered. At this time, good morning, Mr. CEO. We have an agenda review.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could, before the CEO comments, I'd just like to have item 11 pulled off with a consent calendar for some quick comments about it, but we have Mr. Watson from Interfaces here and needs to get to Los Angeles as quickly as he can, so if right after we do consent, if we could do this item, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are three other adjustments to the agenda. We have item 19. There's a revised recommendation which adds the word increase on recommendation number Item number 24 indicates a four-fifths vote. That is not correct. It only requires three fifths. Item number 31 will be heard at 9:30 a.m. as a request by Supervisor Flynn and approved by Chairman Long. Mr. Bennett's already coming.
Madam Chair. On 16, if we could allow me to ask a question about it, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll pull 16 for comment. Are there any other under agenda review? Okay, shall we have a vote on that?
I'll move, oh, yes. I move that we accept the changes to the agenda as proposed.
So motion is second. Hearing no objection. So ordered. Then our consent agenda items will be 10 through 21, with the exception of pulling 11 and 16 for comment.
I move items 10 through 21, with the exception of 11 through 16.
Second.
So motion is second. Hearing no objection. So ordered. Then let's move to item number 11.
Thank you very much. I believe we have county council, we've, we have, there we go. We have new, we have, you have new language in front of you, and I just want to take a moment to explain this to the board, that item 11 is a, we have to change our relationship. Just give you the history. For almost the last two years, we have been working with the state to try to get a $350,000 grant for Oakview School, and we've, we've come close and close, and we've just kept narrowing it down, narrowing it down, narrowing it down. And tomorrow, or is it later this afternoon, is the deadline, the final, final deadline, and we've kept working things out and working things out. Well, of course, we got a curve thrown at us in the middle of last week. The state said, well, everything looks really good. We really like it, which is really rare to get this money from the state for Oakview School, but they needed some changes in our lease relationship with Interface, and so we had to change the language of our relationship with Interface. And the two things that I would just highlight to you, working with county council, one, we had to change it from where the, our relationship could be ended at will to our relationship is ended at cause instead of at will. Now, I had a meeting with county council, I think also spoke with the CEO. I don't think anybody is overly worried about this. It is not like Interface is dying to be there and will fight us tooth and nail for the opportunity to stay. In fact, Interface is there because we've asked them to be there. The other issue is the issue of the construction of the, of the work, and what has been worked out is that simply after this, we will enter into negotiations with Interface to clarify exactly how we do the actual construction with Interface afterwards. So county council, did I accurately portray the two issues that are of concern?
You did. You covered them thoroughly.
All right, great. So, and I wish there was, you know, but unfortunately, we're up against the state deadline, and this is where we are, and if we want the $350,000, this is what we have to do to help facilitate that. This isn't a guarantee, but this gives us a great shot for our application to go in. So with that, I'd move, recommend, move item 11 with the, with the changes as submitted, revised on your desk by county council.
Second.
So motion is second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll have item 16, Supervisor Flynn, for comment.
Item 16, if we could have maybe a summary of what's happening here. I'm looking at page three and looking at the first paragraph. It says that the, the former owners of the fee takes have made annual principal and interest payments toward the retirement of their respective shares of the State Water Quality Control Fund loan contract that financed construction of the sewer improvements in CSA 30, that's Nylon Acres. The city has agreed to pay CSA $7,095. Is that the extent of it? Or is the city taking on any part of the loan?
What it is, Supervisor, Steve Williams of Public Works. The issue here is that when the sewer lines were put in under county service area number 30, there were assessments levied against the property owners to pay out the loan for the construction of the sewer improvements, and those have been paid off. And then the city is buying these properties, and they're buying them subject to those loans, and so they're paying those loans off, basically, and that's the amount of principal and interest left on the loan.
And that's what they're paying?
Right. They're paying, they're paying for the, to pay off the loans. That is not what they're paying for the properties. They're buying those lots outright from the property owners, subject to those loans, and now they're paying those loans off.
Oh, okay. The reason I raise the question is we've got a lot of sensitive issues with Oxnard at the moment, and one of them could be the requesting that they waive or at least reduce the hookup fees for the sewers in El Rio when they, when we finally get to that point. So I think we have to be somewhat sensitive to kind of these negotiations that go on and look a little bit into the future, too, with them. Anyway, that's my point. I move that we adopt.
Second.
So motion is second. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, that completes our consent items, and we will now move to item 24, which is ratification, the submission of grant application for library services. Pardon me? Oh, no, we've, excuse me. I just jumped right over the.
I was surprised, too.
So excited over that consent agenda moving so fast. Public comment. At this time, we'll have an opportunity to hear from the public who may wish to speak to the board on items not appearing on our agenda. Do I have cards? I do have a card. Oh, come on up, and then you can submit the card.
I was real confused as to whether I had missed it or not, so I'm glad I didn't miss it.
I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, members of the supervisors' board. My name is Sessar Edman, and I'm a resident of El Rio in Oxnard, California, and I'm here this morning to share with you some good news about some good things that are happening here in our county. You may be aware, hopefully, that this year, 2005, is the review of the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty at the U.N. in New York, and that meeting starts in May, May 2nd. As part of that, there's an international effort that's engaging local communities across the world that's being headed by the mayors of Nagasaki and Hiroshima in Japan, and it's called Mayors for Peace. Last year, the first meeting of the Mayors for Peace took place in New York at the U.N., and the only U.S. mayor that attended that meeting was Dr. Gabino Aguirre from the city of Santa Paula. And we're really proud in terms of having somebody from Ventura County represent, you know, local people, local communities on this issue, because ultimately, the threat of nuclear weapons is very real, and we see more danger and threats happening every day, and so what can we do as local communities to address this issue? Well, one, we can, at a minimum, make a statement saying that this is something of concern, because if, God forbid, we ever have to deal with a nuclear attack, it's going to be local communities who are going to have to respond first. Our hospitals, our police, our fire, and the impact is all local. And so this Mayors for Peace campaign is working across the world to get mayors to make a statement, to be involved, to say that our government should do something to figure out how we can live up to our agreements in terms of, you know, the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty, and ensure that there's other countries that come on board, because our existence is very fragile, and our environment is very fragile, and we need to do something to ensure that the future of our kids is secure, that we can find alternative ways to solve, to resolve problems. And as local leaders, as members of a board or of council, you are familiar with how to resolve issues, how to resolve conflict, and so it's incumbent upon you to make a statement, and I invite you to make a statement. There was going to be other people who were going to be joining us this morning, but I don't know what happened to them. But there's people in other cities this week, from April 15th through April 22nd, it's called From Tax Day to Earth Day, and I'm sure you're familiar with what happened on Friday here at the Government Center with regard to the amount of money that is spent on nuclear weapons and what can, that the money can be used for in other ways. So tonight, at the Oxnard City Council, the city will be passing a resolution, making a statement, you know, in support of the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty and the efforts of the Mayors for Peace and the abolition 2000. So I invite this board to participate in some way during the month of May. Maybe we'll be coming back to you and requesting a resolution or some sort of statement, but I just wanted to make you aware that Ventura County is actively involved. The mayor of the city of Ventura will be participating in the upcoming meeting in New York, along with Dr. Gabino Aguirre, Carmen Ramirez from Oxnard, representing Mayor Holden, Maricela Morales from the city of Port Juani, and other members of our community who are actively involved in this effort and hope to make this world a better and safer place. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. No further cards? Pardon me? Yeah. He's filling it out. Good morning.
Good morning. May I be permitted to submit my card?
Yes, you certainly can. Good morning, welcome.
My name is Leitha Marshall. I'm a citizen of Oxnard, and I'm here this morning to express this citizen's appreciation and admiration to the Board of Supervisors for the manner in which you have sought to resolve the issue with the safety departments. You have my gratitude, my admiration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time to come and share that with us. We appreciate it. Any further public cards? I don't see any submitted, so we'll move on to board comments, and starting with Supervisor Michaels.
Good morning. I have no comments this morning.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I would just, two things. One, ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the list that I'm submitting, and also just note that this is the ten-year, it's, ten years ago was when the Oklahoma bombing took place, and I think it's sort of marked the beginning of a change in terms of climate here in this country, and that's something I think is important for us to acknowledge from time to time in terms of that change. Thank you.
Absolutely. Supervisor Flynn?
I have no comments, nor any list.
And no list? Oh, we're healthy, we're healthy this week. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know about two events that I attended on Saturday. One was the celebration of that Socha University becoming now part of the park system, and was one of the most beautiful properties you can ever be on, just huge thousand-year-old oak trees, and they have kept that property so nice. Joe Edmundston with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy was saying it's going to be difficult to keep it up as well as they have. It's just an incredible piece of property. And then also, in Oak Park, I was able to organize a memorial ceremony for our departed Oak Park MAC member, Kent Behringer. He had been a six-term Oak Park MAC member, and through the assistance of the Ranchesimi Recreation and Park District and Venco Western, we are able to donate a bench in his honor and a, and plant an oak tree in his honor right behind the Oak Park Library. So it was very nice. The Oak Park Gardeners did some nice landscaping, too, so it was, it was nice to be able to recognize this individual, and it was wonderful to see the agencies coming together to have that happen. So I wanted to let you know about that, and then also ask that the board close in memory of the people on this list.
Thank you. I also don't have a list to submit. We must have a healthy county this week. I know. And, and just to, I heard that this morning coming in, Supervisor Bennett, about Oklahoma, and you kind of think of where were you ten years ago, and, and how our world has changed, and it truly has, has changed tremendously in how we approach our daily activities, and anytime we, we, we talk about security in our county and security for our citizens, there's no question. Mark day. Okay, that concludes our board comments, and now we will move to item twenty-four to our Ventura County Library, and invite our wonderful director, Stare Kreisman.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Stare Kreisman from the County Library. What can I say about this, except that we dithered around too long? We had received some discouraging comments on our first try at this grant, which is very open but very competitive, and staff just didn't want to do anything with it, and then we decided it was too good to pass up. So three days before the grant application deadline, which was April first, a Friday, I believe, we all put pedal to the metal and decided to submit a grant that was something we were working on in-house anyway, but we could certainly do it much more quickly and much better if we got the grant money and could hire some help and add some, some resources to our webpage. So that's what the grant submission is for. It is for enhancements to the county library webpage, which we, we hope to have in, in some fashion together by the, the end of the year. And I also wanted to assure you that this type of grant, since I am coming to you post the application, can always be withdrawn if approval is not granted. We could always call the state library and say, take us out of the queue.
Okay, are there questions? Seeing no questions and no cards. Board comments?
Second.
It's motion and a second, any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered, and what is happening on Friday?
On Friday, the city of Camarillo is holding a groundbreaking for the wonderful new Camarillo Library, and we invite everyone to come. The groundbreaking will be at two o'clock in the afternoon on the twenty-second at the corner of Lewis and Los Posits Roads, the beautiful site of the new library.
Yes, and it's a very, it'll be a very important groundbreaking for the city of Camarillo, and we thank you, and for all your hard work on it, and I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stare. There was a motion and a second, no objections, so, so ordered on that item. Thank you. We move now to item twenty-five, which is our Service Employees International and Home Supportive Services Retroactive Salary Adjustment. Good morning, Mr. Nicole.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. We're here before you today to close the loop on the resolution of the issues regarding the negotiations with the SEIU in-home support services workers. You may recall, when we completed the contract, there was some confusion with regards to the state's support for the salary level that we had achieved in negotiations. We are still in discussions with the state regarding that. The simple issue was whether or not we had met the timeliness requirement for the submission of a change in our pay rate. The result of that was the county wound up absorbing one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in additional costs that otherwise would have been supported by the state. The board, in an effort to maintain its word with the employees' union, proceeded with the salary adjustment. We did, in fact, pay the in-home support services workers the amount we agreed to, and we, at this point, continue to negotiate with the state regarding their willingness to amend their acceptance of it at the December date rather than a January date. This is to formally close the loop with you, come back in public, acknowledge that we had done so, and request your approval for that additional expenditure.
Questions? Supervisor Parks?
What's the likelihood of reimbursement from the state?
It is difficult to tell, because the issue is a matter between two state agencies, and the question is to how they interpret the question of whether or not we had conditional approval at the outset. It would be impossible for me to apply a percentage to it, not being familiar with the internal workings between those two sections.
Do you think it was a result of, just because of the two sections and getting the papers back and forth and back again, that caused the delay, or was it the county and getting the papers there? I'm not sure. I've heard the finger get, you know, seen the finger get pointed in different directions.
I actually can't point the finger specifically. There was sufficient confusion on the part of all parties. Everyone was trying to act in good faith. We've simply run into a regulatory issue that now is subject to interpretation.
Just reading in the paper, it does seem that it is a burdensome process, despite what others may think, at the state, if it has to go among different agencies and back and forth.
As you're aware, how their system establishes what due diligence is for their fiscal responsibilities, they have their own rules, and oftentimes, they do appear to be more complicated than our own, but it's hard to judge when they're the ones who ultimately have the responsibility for the distribution.
And unfortunately, in this, you know, there is someone who ends up not getting paid, and I think I appreciate the county, and I respect the fact that we want to do the right thing on this, and I think this is the right thing to do, and hopefully, we will get reimbursed.
We intend to press our position on it.
Thanks.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I know that we really have no control over establishing union dues, the amount of the dues.
Yes, sir.
But in phone calls I've received, it seems that the dues for this particular group is going up rather substantially.
Oh, is that right? The, the dues set for this group was a part of their election. There was a dual vote, if you recall, in approval of the contract and the approval of the SEIU's representation, and in fact, there was a vote established, and the in-home support services workers overwhelmingly approved both issues.
Okay. I've just had several phone calls, so maybe they didn't understand that.
That's entirely possible.
Supervisor Michaels, did you have? No? Any further comments or questions? Mr. Johnston, yes?
I'd just like to point out that this particular issue, in my judgment, has something to do with the difficult times the state is faced with, that bureaucracies by their nature are inflexible, and overlapping bureaucracies by their nature are complex, but everybody during good times recognizes that, and there is such thing as cleanup legislation, and there are ways to remedy these things, but when the state is running, you know, billions in the red, they are much less, they have, they have less incentive to help us with the cleanup. It's sort of like, well, gotcha, and they need what, they need their money, too. We're not giving up on it, but normally, this sort of thing wouldn't be as cumbersome, I don't believe, as it has been in the last couple of years, and I think it's just because all jurisdictions, particularly the state of California, are having a difficult time, and this has been a, an issue that the governor has attempted to reduce the cost in, and one way in which for departments to help cooperate with some of those things is to look for every opportunity to be sure that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and keep as much money in one's pocket as they can. So it's a little unfortunate, but the good news, I think, from the standpoint of Ventura County is, is that we've kept our word. We, we settled the contract, and we're doing right by the people, and then we'll see if we can iron this out as time goes along.
Madam Chair, one matter of clarification to make certain the record is straight, and thank you to the auditor controller for bringing this up. Your board, in acting this morning, is hearing this matter as the Board of the IHSS Public Authority, rather than the County Board of Supervisors.
That is correct. Are there other comments from board members on the item? I think your, your opening statement that to keep our word is, is very important, both for our county employees, but to send that up to the state and ask them to keep their word. Action by the board?
Move the recommended action.
Motion and a second, seeing no objection to that, so ordered. Thank you so much for the good work on that. Pardon me? Oh. She's not yet. Oh, Twenty-sixth Amendment to the current SEIU Local Memorandum of Agreement on Tier... I don't have to put my glasses on. Tier two. Thank you, I knew that. Mr. Nicole.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's nice to see you again. The matter you have before you here simply closes the loop on the resolution of the Tier Two Retirement Issue lawsuit, and this formally incorporates the language of the settlement into the contract. Now, the record will firmly establish what the parties had agreed to at the outset and what they achieved as a result of the settlement and the lawsuit. This will make the record consistent, and now we have settled that issue.
Are there questions? No cards.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, hearing no objection to that. Again, good work, and so ordered, and thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Just love closing loops.
Yes.
Keeping everything neat and clean.
Next up, we'll have item twenty-seven, District Attorney Adoption of Resolution Authorizing Continued Acceptance of Funds from the State of California. Good morning.
Good morning. Mel Chambers with the DA's office. This is an item that is requesting that you adopt this resolution, which permits us to file reimbursement with the state government claims board and victims' compensation board. It funds a position that helps victims in receiving restitution for crimes against them, so.
Any questions from board members? Supervisor Parks, anything?
Just move the item.
Motion and a second, hearing no objection to the item? So ordered. Thank you. Item twenty-eight, Adoption of Resolution, Submission of an Application for Grant Funds. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jeff Peft, DA's office. Haven't been here in a while, so if I could come by and say hi. This is simply asking that you, asking for a recommendation that you authorize the district attorney to submit an application to the state for workers' compensation program grant funds.
Questions?
Great program, it's been around for a while, they've done a great job.
Motion and a second, any objection to the item? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine, Apply for Congressional Mandated Award from the United States Department of Justice Office.
Okay, this is second year on this program, and it's just requesting approval to file the application with the federal government. Very worthwhile program, funds two positions, an investigator and an attorney. Any questions?
Second.
It's a motion and a second, seeing no objection, hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Johnston.
I would just like to thank the district attorney's office and point out that these requests all come in advance of applications, which is something that the county has been working on countywide, and the district attorney's office has done stellar work this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate it.
All righty. Next up on the hit parade, we have item number thirty, which is my item to reappoint individuals on the list submitted for boards and commissions, and that's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you. Item number thirty-one, no, we're going to hold that till nine thirty. Item thirty-two, Mr. Flynn.
Item thirty-two is recommending Ruben Jimenez Valbrio to serve in the AIDS Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Item thirty-three, Supervisor Flynn.
Thirty-three is recommending the appointment of Evans Hughes to serve in the Ventura County Harbor Commission, representing the fifth district.
Move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any objection to the motion? Is it, motion and a second, any objection to the motion?
Yes, I object.
As do I, but it passes three-two. Item thirty-four, Sheriff's Department Authorization to Submit a Grant Application to the Department of Justice. And...
Move approval.
There's a motion. Motion and a second. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered.
No correspondence this week? What happened?
Oh, and there's no correspondence, and we then can go into closed session for our nine-thirty timed certain items, to come back out for those. Shall we? We'll see what we can get accomplished in closed session, and we'll be back out at nine-thirty.
We're going to do.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to call the board back to order and we had a scheduled 9:30 that we will hear first and then we'll move to the additional 9:30 added by Supervisor Flynn's request. And invite for a report of investments for the month ending March 31st, our treasurer, tax collector, Mr. Matheny. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Well, it's with mixed feelings that I report to you that for the month of March, the Treasury investment pool outperformed my 401K.[1150.13][1150.13](Laughter). But the good news for the county was that there was about $3.2 million of additional money available for our schools and local government as a result of the earnings out of the Treasury pool. Things are moving along steadily. We expect to have some gradually increased return as the interest rate environment for what we do improves. Not everybody cheers when interest rates go up, but certainly we do. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions from the board members on the report? I don't hear any questions. We thank you, sir, for bringing us forward and it is a discuss and file action. Is that the support of the board? Is there a motion?
No.
Thank you. Motion and a second to receive and file. Thank you for the report, sir. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Now we will move to an item that has been added for a time certain and that is item number, give me a number, 33, 31, 31. And that is an item brought forward by Supervisor Flynn. Supervisor Flynn?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair, board members. This is an item that has been looked at for some time, discussed, debated, and hopefully this will bring about a resolution to the issue. And the recommendation is to approve the installation of a non-warranted signal on Victoria Avenue, entrance to the old nursery site. As you know, do all of you know where I'm talking about? Do you?
Sir.
You do?[1274.42][1274.42](Laughter). Direct the Public Works Agency to negotiate a cooperative agreement for the installation and maintenance of the traffic signal with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation and/or the city of Oxnard. They've both been working on the issue. As you look at the text, it starts off with the first paragraph. Cabrillo proposed to build 54 units of affordable housing. Actually, affordable isn't the correct word here because half of the housing will be low-income housing for farmworkers primarily. And the board has adopted a policy of encouraging low-cost housing, encouraging farmworker housing. That's been a policy for some time. And it's not an easy one to meet, as everyone knows. And it's true even with this one in that we have the traffic issues before us. However, does the city of Oxnard have a representative here from Public Works? Okay, they'll be able to explain the, how this one light issue is used on Oxnard Boulevard as an example. But we have, we have the development going in that Cabrillo will build of the 54 units and half of them low-income units. And it will be near the former nunnery and at, almost at the corner, if you will, maybe a quarter of a mile or something away from the corner of Victoria and Gonzalez. And without the light, it makes it difficult to get into the southbound left lane because there is no light there. So you have a dangerous situation, in my view. And there are schoolchildren who will be living in the units and there will be a bus and a bus has to have a safe way to get into the southbound lane and this will help do that and will be safe. It has to be safe. There's a prototype women recovery center located there near where this development is and they've had difficulty getting into the southbound lane. If they had to go north, then that makes it really difficult because there's very few places where you can make a U-turn and get into the southbound lane, so that makes a problem there. The traffic light will allow traffic to turn south or left out of the exit. The school district, as I've said, needs the light and supports it to provide bus service. And Mr. Diaz, is he here from the Oxnard School District? He would be able to talk about that in more detail, but there will be children riding a bus out of this development. The light will make the exit entrance to the development safer and the light will aid in addressing safety concerns. And there are other areas, as I've mentioned, that the city of Oxnard has used this light technique to accommodate traffic onto the Oxnard Boulevard. And if I could call up the, with your permission?
Sure.
The Oxnard representatives, if you could come up and talk about that. And you'll have to turn in a card if you haven't already.
(No one speaks).
You could, you could fill that out after your presentation and then hand it in.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, supervisors.
Good morning.
The situation that we're, or the...
And your name, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm Jason Sumonte. I'm the city traffic engineer for the city of Oxnard.
Thank you.
Caltrans has installed three of these signal types on Oxnard Boulevard and basically only one direction has to stop. In this location, southbound Victoria would not be stopping, it would only be northbound Victoria. And currently, there is a signal at the intersection of Gonzalez and Victoria that intersection is approximately 1,500 feet from this proposed intersection and that's ideal spacing for two signals. People northbound on Victoria would have a clear vision of the red, green, yellow indications at this signalized intersection and I think it would function very well.
Questions?
Would the signal only turn red for Victoria when it's triggered by traffic coming out?
Yes, that's correct. There would be loops in the roadway that would sense. And we could, we could time that so that, you know, that light wouldn't turn red until after Gonzalez and Victoria northbound turned red so that there'd be a sufficient gap there.
But it would still only, it wouldn't be automatic unless there's a car there.
No, it wouldn't.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission, if I could call Sal Gonzalez up of the Oxnard Housing Authority. I know you just walked in South, but we've been talking about this for six months. And you've gotten a little bit crabber as the time goes on.
Yeah.
And when you have an opportunity, Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd fill a blue card out also.
Sure.
Thank you and good morning.
Did you want me to speak at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we are supportive certainly of the recommendation and request. This opens the opportunity for negotiations on a cooperation agreement and we certainly look forward to participation in that effort. It is a worthwhile effort on this project because it is an affordable housing project. We've been working on it for an extensive period of time and there is a preference here for farmworker families. So it is a project that I think that all of us, county included, and the city of Oxnard could claim as a project that we're all supportive of, you know. So your help would be helpful in this project as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How specifically, for farmworker housing, you said there'll be a preference. How will that specifically be delineated in the project?
Well, as people are applying for the project, they will all be asking whether or not they are farmworkers, okay? And those that, on the list that are in fact farmworkers and that do qualify, those people would be admitted first, so.
So there will be a priority list established?
Yes.
For the entire project, the 54 units?
Right, yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. You do have some cards filled out.
Yes, I do.
The two people should speak from the city's point of view. Did you know Sal Gonzalez is headed the Oxnard Housing Authority for years and Oxnard carries the great bulk of low-cost housing?
I do a good job. Are there any others then for your presentation, Supervisor Flynn, at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, are there any questions from the board of either speakers or anyone on county staff at this time before we open the public comments? I do have cards submitted and there are about, oh, about 10, I believe. So we'll move and move ahead and invite the public to please comment on this item and the first one I'd like to call up would be Dan Hardy. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairlong, Supervisors, Staff. I'm not going to speak because I think Supervisor Flynn's explained the issue well. I'd just like to say the time is of the essence on this project. We have been at this since about 2000 and we'd like to start construction July 1st, so your help is appreciated. Thank you for supporting our request.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you're starting construction July 1st, what's the period, the length of time for completion?
It's an 18-month construction period.
Okay.
And that's due to access issues on the site.
Right, okay.
Typically less than that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Jeanette Lewandowski of Prototypes. Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you very much for this opportunity. I am an employee of Prototypes Women's Center, and my role is that I get the community involved in our program. And I'd like to thank you for considering the light. It is an issue. We have witnessed several accidents at that corner, and I think that out of convenience, it would be easier for our community to be able to come to our program and see what we have to offer, and I think it's been a big barrier not having a light there. So I just would like to thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. And thank you for the work you do. Eric Baragon.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Eric Baragon. I'm here representing the Act Futures Alliance Farmworker Housing Task Force with other members in the audience who are sitting over here to my right. If they can please stand. As many of you are familiar with, and I know Supervisor Flynn made a comment in regards to the issue, that the Board has taken a strong leadership in advocating for farmworker housing throughout Ventura County. This Board took some strong steps for that, and of course, we've also, I believe this last month, Ellen Brokaw came over and presented to you a document which outlines the work that the community has been doing. And so we are definitely very excited with the prospect of farmworker housing. Cabrillo Economic Development plans on building fifty-four units, all of low-income housing, with twenty-seven of those geared specifically towards farmworkers. That is definitely very exciting news for us in this committee, and we definitely support the proposed light on Victoria Avenue. And we definitely applaud your work towards this becoming reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Macri Ortiz.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairperson Long and Supervisors. My name is Barbara Macri Ortiz. I'm here on behalf of advocates for civil justice and also on behalf of my clients. This project has some history. It was conceived in the year 2000 as a result of a lawsuit that was, I represented actually some farmworkers. And as part of the resolution of lawsuit, this project was conceived in twenty-four, twenty-seven units for farmworkers and twenty-seven very low-income units tax credit, with Cabrillo being the lead agency to develop them. It's funny because in the negotiations that resulted in the settlement of the litigation, we thought we covered everything. We actually had the design of the project, we had the footprint, it was going to be an administrative approval. There were certain little things that had to be done, but we didn't have to go through the whole process. And we really did think we had covered everything, but as you can see with affordable housing, you can never cover everything. There's always going to be something. And it has been very, very frustrating for my clients and myself over the last few months because we seem like we got caught in the middle of a tug of war, you know, between a couple of agencies or jurisdictions. I think it's really not a big issue. I mean, I've lived in Oxnard for, what, fifteen years, going up Oxnard Boulevard using that turn-in, and it's a real easy approach for the left turn. I've also gone down Harbor an awful lot and stopped at the stoplight on Gonzalez to turn left, and all I do is flick the lights on my car, and there's a turn signal. It's there for, you know, five seconds while I cross, and then it changes. And really, I mean, what we're talking about, other than the prototypes, I don't know what their traffic patterns are, but I do know with this one, I mean, we're going to have twenty-seven farmworker families, which means you're going to have, you know, half of the units, half of the people leaving at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. And then you're going to have probably another wave that comes out at the more normal worktimes. It's not going to be a big deal. It is going to be, you know, an improvement in terms of the safety. I don't think it's going to be that big of an inconvenience, particularly if southbound traffic isn't really going to be affected by it in the northbound. I go up that road every time I come up here or to go to court, and, you know, it's not going to be a big deal. But for the people who are going to get the housing, some coming out of garages, it is going to be a very big deal. And it has been very frustrating for us. We want to get this thing going, get it done, get people in there, and, you know, bring a little bit of dignity to some of our hardworking families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sylvia Porras.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sylvia Porras, and I am the Transportation Coordinator for Prototypes. And so I transport all our clients and our children to all their medical appointments and any appointments that they may have. So I am constantly in and out of that area. So I definitely feel that we do need a traffic signal there. It's very hard for me to get in and out of there. I drive a fifteen-passenger bus, so, and the traffic with the speed limit there, it's hard to get in and out of there easily and safely, of course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keith York.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Keith York. Good morning, Madam Chair, fellow Supervisors. I'm a member of the Ventura County Farmworker Housing Committee, and I live in Ventura. And I'm here to support this measure because, as we all recognize, agriculture in Ventura County is probably the biggest industry that we have. And it's an industry that is unsustainable without farming workers. The attempt by our committee has been to provide housing for these workers because housing that has in former days been used is falling apart and cannot be reconstructed. This signal, as designed, as I understand it from speaking with the engineer, not only provides safe access to Victoria from the housing project, but also supplies safe access to the housing project from southbound traffic entering the project from Victoria. And I think that's an important consideration. I believe that it's really important that we do this to preclude future legal situations that might arise by not having such a light at this location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Lynn Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Jones. I'm the Director for Prototypes Women's Center, and we'd like to thank you for considering this request. It is very important to us. We have thirty women and thirty children that live in what was, we're very fortunate to have the old convent building since 1998. And many of our women came here today with their children to support the measures. I'd like them to just stand up so that Board of Supervisors could know who's here from Prototypes. In addition to, as Sylvia said, all the transporting that we do ourselves, we wanted you to also be aware of how many people come to visit us. And so in addition to the families of our women, we also have their social workers, their probation officers, all their related service workers, public health nurses, doctors coming to our site on a regular basis. And we also have school buses that are trying to pick up children to take them to school, and that has really proved to be a problem on many occasions. So we thank you for your support of this effort. We think it'll make a big difference.
Thank you. Val Lyndon.
Hi, I'm Val Lyndon, the Parenting Program Coordinator for Prototypes. One of the things I also would like to point out in addressing this is that while we have thirty children that live on site, we also have at least sixty children that we serve at any one time. So as we were talking about social workers and public health nurses and people that come on site, every week, at least twice a week, we're also having those additional children that live with family members and foster homes coming to our site. They come on Wednesdays for our Mommy and Me group. They also come on the weekends to visit. On Thursday nights, we also have about fifteen family members that we serve every Thursday night, so we have those people coming in. We also have a twelve-step group on site that the community is involved in, and they also bring their children to our site. So I know we have children that are going to be moving here. We also have quite a few children that we're serving right now, and this light is very important to them and their mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment cards submitted. Are there any others in the public who didn't get a chance to submit a card? Those of you who submitted yellow cards, they were passed along to the Board so they could read your comments. And those comments were already made, so that concludes any public comment on the item, and it is before the Board. For questions, discussion? Supervisor Bennett?
I appreciate everybody coming on this issue, and I think it certainly is an appropriate goal for us to be focused on farmworker housing. And I had the pleasure of visiting, and what's happening there is just remarkable work in terms of what you're doing at Prototypes for all those women involved. So like everybody else up here on the Board, we're all very solidly in support of Prototypes, very solidly support of farmworker housing. The question is just making sure that we do this thing right in terms of the traffic. A couple of things that I'd like to point out, and again, very supportive of having the units. Many years ago, there was a discussion about whether Victoria should be curved or not, and we ended up putting a big curve in Victoria. It's ended up creating quite a bit of liability as a result of that, and many people looked back and said, you know, overall, that was not overall good planning in terms of that curve. I wasn't there for that debate. It was twenty years ago, and so I just want to make sure this part of Victoria, it's important that we handle this stuff right. This light that we're talking about is a non-warranted light. It means that the experts that have done the studies are saying that this light isn't warranted. Now, the minute you put in a non-warranted light, you increase the liability because you're doing something against what the experts are saying and against the normal standards that you're at, et cetera. So, and this is consistent, all of the experts saying this is a non-warranted light that we have out there. And I asked, I don't know whether he's got it or not, I asked for a slide to be put up just to try to help. This is a slide, try to get our eyes on it here, and I wish to goodness I had a little red pointer, and it looks like one is coming, right, for me to be able to point something out. I think... Thank you. I think what we're focused on here right now, I would offer, is just one little part of the overall development that is affecting Victoria Avenue. And we make a mistake if we just bring it down to, okay, we strip everything else out away, and you're either four Prototypes and four farmworker housing, and therefore you're going to do the light or you're not. What I think we have to be for is, overall, let's make sure we do the right thing for the road. The things that I would point out to you here is that this is a major housing development that Oxnard put in recently, and here is what we're talking about as the affordable housing site for the farmworker housing, right? Now, when Oxnard put in this major development here, it's going to have, it was very common sense that it would have a major impact on the traffic on Victoria right here, right? Everybody, you know, would say that it'd have a significant impact. And then, and Oxnard did an EIR on this whole thing, and then Oxnard did a supplemental EIR for these units here. Now, when Oxnard did the supplemental EIR for these units here, they said, the supplemental EIR said there would be no impacts. You put the units in, there'd be no impacts. They didn't identify the traffic light as something being needed or anything else. So we have all of this data saying, you know, yes, you can do this, and it doesn't require a light. Now, if the EIR would have said that there was a light required, then you would be able to say to Oxnard, you want to approve this thing, then you need to do the light. But Oxnard's EIR said, don't do the light, and now, of course, they're coming to the county and saying the county should do the light and have that liability. The other thing I would offer to you is, the common sense thing to do here is, it is difficult when you have as heavily a travel traffic as you have here on Victoria. It's difficult to add people having their main access going in and out here. When this housing project went in, it would be very easy to have these people be able to access this, these quiet residential streets, and then be able to come out just like all these other people. But Oxnard has put in a golf course here, right? And put in a golf course and does not want to put an access road, which can be done, I mean, it happens in golf courses, not your favorite thing, but you have to ask yourself, what's the greater security risk? A street going through a golf course that might inconvenience the golfers, right, but not be a big liability risk versus the liability risk of putting in a non-warranted signal here, right? But it is Oxnard's choice to do this, Oxnard's choice to not do the street here. So then I asked myself, so what's the next good thing, I think looking at this from regional government, a good government decision? Oxnard has the right to make those decisions. Oxnard can say, okay, we're going to build these projects, and we want to do this, and in fact, we want to put a light here. This is all being approved by Oxnard, right? And we want to put a light here. Then what you can say to Oxnard is, what normally happens when a city builds out to the edge of a, and Oxnard, by the way, Oxnard's city limits goes right here to the edge of Victoria, when they build out to the edge of a road, the city takes the road. In other words, they make it part of the, and that way, the city can sit there and make whatever decisions they want to as they're making all these decisions about development, et cetera, as it goes forward. But again, Oxnard has not been willing to take the road, which is what they, I think, should do. Their development is the major impact on this road. Oxnard does not want to put a road through here, which would be far, far safer than having people trying to come out on the Victoria as their main access, and would just simply be this minor inconvenience for the golfers in terms of this. And again, it happens all the time. Public courses in particular have roads that go through there. And instead of what I would call, this is sort of like do all the development first, and then at the last minute, kind of build the pressure to do the one thing that's sort of a non-warranted thing, and try to do it with pressure. So I want to be supportive of this project moving forward and trying to have that happen. And I just think it's time for Oxnard to step up and just agree to make this connection right through here to this residential neighborhood, and that brings them into a residential neighborhood. They all come out together on the Gonzalez with lots of other traffic, much more rational than a not, there's a reason why this is a non-warranted signal. When you have a signal where it's not obvious there's a lot of other traffic coming, you actually increase liability. And so I appreciate Mr. York saying it'll make things safer. I think it's sort of, the experts are saying it may not make things safer. When you just suddenly have a traffic signal when it's like it's not obvious there's a whole nother major intersection coming, you know, when you come to Gonzalez, drivers start to be aware of that. So it's certainly, it's debatable about, and that's why it is a non-warranted signal. So one would be to put the road through here and simply make this work. Oxnard could say, you know what, we don't want to do that. We'll take the liability. Oxnard could simply take the road, and our CEO met with the city manager of Oxnard and said that you should take the operation of the signal, and you should take all of the liability if there is an accident. Because the minute that there is an accident on here in this area, every lawyer, the first thing they will do is they will pull the records and find out that's a non-warranted signal. And every one of our lawsuits will have them suing the county for putting in a non-warranted signal. So you have to be aware of that. You put in a non-warranted signal, no matter how much we say we want to do it, that's what will be in every lawsuit. Oxnard needs to sign off for that. So we have a number of things put in here by Public Works, by Butch Britt. I talked to Butch Britt last night. I think it's accurate to say, our Public Works Department, in spite of this letter being here, they're not saying that they recommend this. They're saying that in spite of the fact that it's not recommended by experts, it's a non-warranted one, if we're going to go forward, we should go forward with these conditions. I would add to these conditions and modify. I would add to these conditions and modify, number one, in conditions three and four. It says the city or Cabrillo Economic Development Community should assume liability. I think it's preposterous for us to say Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation should assume the liability for million-dollar lawsuits that will come in from this. So I think one of the conditions we should completely drop from this, if we're going to go forward, is that it's the city. The city of Oxnard has the deep pockets, not Cabrillo Economic Development Committee. Just completely inappropriate. I mean, you bankrupt one of the best organizations we have in town, in the county, for providing farmworker housing, et cetera. So it should be the city that accepts that liability. The city should make a decision whether they want to cut a road through here or whether they want to take this road. And we need to have that information, and I think people should appropriately turn some of this attention to the city to say, the city is the one making all of the development decisions that are affecting all the issues here, and this is a heavily traveled road that has a request for a non-warranted signal. City needs to take, step up the plate and take the liability and take the steps they need to do for this to happen. So thank you for the pen, and those are, that's my, those are my initial thoughts.
Other comments? Questions?
Is this signal being required by the city of Oxnard for the development to be approved?
Would you leave that slide up, by the way?
He's shaking his head no. Do you want to have that city representative? They're not, city's not requiring it?
So this project-
Would you please come to the microphone?
I guess this is the only way that the project could have access, though, is on Victoria?
Yeah, it's pretty much up to the county, because this is an intrusion onto a county-owned road. And actually, I think the whole issue began with the Public Works Department for the, agency for the county, basically saying that they wouldn't allow a southbound or left turn from the project, forcing all traffic to go north, which was a concern to the school district, which would be busing, picking up kids on buses from the project that they would have to, when they came out of the project, that they would have to go north on Victoria all the way to Olivas Park Road, and not be able to make a U-turn there, but actually go out to Harbor. So that was the difficulty. So there was some discussion about what are the ways to be able to strengthen security or safety in this project, at this project side or this intersection. And the traffic light was the issue that surfaced, that it was an opportunity or a way of being able to address the issue. So we're not imposing that, you know, but the developer has to deal now with the intrusion onto and the impact upon Victoria Avenue as to how that's going to be addressed, you know. So this is simply a way of being able to address the issue.
So you say that, I'm sorry, I'm just not quite clear, that you cannot make presently without this half signal, it'd be difficult to make left turns, or you also need a right turn?
Well, I believe that, excuse me, the developer was told that they would not be allowed to, that the people exiting out of the project here would not be allowed to make a southbound turn or a left turn. And that's how the issue began. So, but it was really, you know, a county-driven issue as to how best to address that. And we, but we didn't require specifically that a traffic light be installed there.
Okay, so-
In fact, there was some reference earlier about an EIR having been done, and the EIR certainly did not show that one needed to be installed.
And there are projects out there where you can't make left turns, you have to do some security movements to try to get in, so, but this isn't a requirement of the city?
No.
And it's just looking at a way to make it easier to get into the development without having to drive a little bit further?
Simply a way of strengthening safety in the area, at that intersection.
Supervisor Parks, if I could just, if I could stay on that point, just, it's not a requirement of the city, because the city's basically saying, we don't care what happens on Victoria Avenue. And I would offer that, when you say it's sort of a requirement of the county, the county has to, our engineers have to say, we have to say what's rational once this project's coming, but it is, but we have offered the road to the city of Oxnard, and they haven't been willing to take it. So my question, I guess, would be, if this was the city of Oxnard's road, would they allow left turns without a signal there? And that's, and see, those are the kind of decisions Oxnard can make if they would take the road. But it's sort of like, they're not taking the road, but they're leaving us with this liability. There are things that they could do. They could take the road, they could take all of the liability for the traffic signal and the lawsuits that go with that. They haven't been willing to do that, is my understanding. So that's where, that's, I think, the next answer.
May I just ask a couple of questions? Cabrillo representative, could you come up with permission of the chair? The time seems to be running on the grant, right, or on the money issue?
Correct. We have probably five different grants lined up that are beginning to fall off if we can't get this thing done in a timely manner. We've been at this since, I think, we initially approached. What we need is an encroachment permit from the county, but obviously, it's not going to work if we have to drive five miles to get when we want to make a left turn. If you make a right turn out of the project, I want to point out that it's a long way around. I did it once, and I wouldn't want to do it again. It's basically a long detour. So what we need from the county is an encroachment permit. We can get an encroachment permit, but we can't make a left-hand turn from that. So that's why this, this is why we need a traffic light. Does that answer your question?
Yes. May I ask one other question of the city? If the city can come up, the representative from Public Works? Can you give us a view of how the system works on Oxnard Boulevard?
Good morning. My name's Lou Balram. I'm with the city of Oxnard. I'm the acting Public Works Director. As Jason, the traffic engineer, indicated earlier, we have several traffic signals in similar configurations, and this one would work in the same fashion. The southbound traffic on Victoria is not impacted, it is not stopped. The only impact would be for allowing the merging traffic from a signal that comes, that would be at that location, allowing the left turn motion from the site. The northbound traffic on Victoria, of course, would have a traffic signal which would stop the traffic, but as Jason indicated previously, there is a 1,500-foot distance between Victoria and Gonzalez, and visibility is there for the signal. In our view, the distance, the configuration works similar to those in Oxnard Boulevard, which have worked very well.
May I just ask one more question on the conditions? Half, let's see, half signal on Victoria Avenue northbound, including synchronization of two-city traffic signal system on the corner of Gonzalez and Victoria. How would that, how would that work so that the northbound traffic would stop, say, at Victoria and Gonzalez, would not, it would not really impede them?
We have control of the, of the timing at Gonzalez and Victoria, so, in other words, we can set the traffic signal so that they cycle in the red or whatever motions we want to control, and we can synchronize the signal so that you can minimize the impact of the traffic flow going north on Victoria by having the two signals synchronized. Now, the one half signal that we propose here would be, as Jason indicated, looped, and that means that there are traffic sensors, so when there is traffic coming out of there, it would trigger a cycle. If there's no vehicles or traffic coming out of there, you have no impact on the flow of traffic on Victoria.
Okay, thank you.
While you're here, if I could ask, why not just a road through the golf course to the residential neighborhood? I mean, from a good planning, from smart growth standpoint, from a good planning standpoint, that would have been the very logical thing to have here. So can you, I mean, I know it'd be inconvenient for some golf, some golfers would be unhappy, but I think that's a small price to pay, for, a small price to pay.
Yeah. I don't know that I'm, you know, at this point, can give an answer to that, simply that the negotiations for the golf course and the development that's right adjacent to the golf course, but on the city, within the city's corporate limits, they have been, I mean, a long process to get those developments and so forth. So I don't, at this point, I don't know the details of that. It's something that, as I understand, when you previously indicated that the studies showed that the signal was not warranted because of the, it was because of the low traffic volumes coming out of there, and that is still correct. However, we want to stress the need for safety at this point. Why we can't go back into the, through the golf course and to the development probably has, I guess, a history issue that I'm not aware of at this point.
Maybe Saul can answer?
Could I ask a question too?
Supervisor Parks?
Is the city of Oxnard willing to assume the responsibility, including liability and hundred percent cost to maintain the traffic signal?
What is being presented to the board, to the items, I guess, the first one is to approve the installation, the second one is to allow us to continue discussions. We have had discussions, or ongoing discussions, and the second recommendation allows us to continue those discussions so that we can come to some resolution.
Because for me to consider this, that would be that it would have to incorporate on the condition that you assume the liability, responsibility for it. Then you can make the decision whether you want the liability for the light on Victoria or you want the liability for going across the golf course. I mean, that then becomes your decision, and the county doesn't have to have the liability for your project.
Well, that is what is currently being discussed, and-
Okay.
And at this point, I don't know what the resolution of that will be, but that is where the discussion is taking place, with our attorneys and counsel from the county.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Michaels?
It seems to me that we've got the cart before the horse here, you know, and until somebody brings me something that the city has agreed to as a condition, I'm not going to vote to approve an un-warranted signal. And it seems to me that in Supervisor Flynn's letter, it says, CEDC is of the opinion that a traffic signal is necessary. However, a traffic signal warrant analysis was conducted, and it's not necessary. And so it, I feel like I'm part of a shell game all of a sudden, and I don't like being the pea under the shell. So I think that the proper way to do this, my opinion, is for the negotiations to be completed and the agreement to be brought forward to the board as this is what they will agree to. Now, board, are you willing to approve the warrant? I don't like doing it the other way around. And so, and the reason being that this board will get pressured. The city will not agree to a hundred percent to all of this, but we've already said, yes, we need a traffic light there, and so then the board is pressured on the back end to agree to something we don't want to agree to so that this can move forward. So I guess my comments, not really a question. I won't approve anything until I have an agreement that the city council of the city of Oxnard has agreed to and will hold fast to if, in fact, this board, and I'm only speaking for myself, but if, in fact, we were to approve the signal. I think the cleaner, easier way is to go back to the city of Oxnard and just ask them to accept the road, period, and then they can do as they wish. And I've come from a city council. I understand how city councils work, but it is, in my mind, with the development that's going out there, it's the responsibility and should be the purview of the city to make the decisions on that section of roadway.
Madam Chair? Supervisor Bennett first?
If I could, I appreciate hearing the comments of the other supervisors in terms of this. I would offer, it seems that, I would offer, I think Supervisor Michaels is right, and I appreciate the timeframe that Cabrillo is under. I don't think this has to take a long time. How long ago did you have a meeting with the Oxnard city manager, Mr. Johnson? I believe it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, I mean, this is not a new item. I mean, the city of Oxnard's had this, you know, the request was made, would the city of Oxnard take this, and I think we're still waiting for that answer, so we need to get that answer from the city of Oxnard. So I don't think this has to take a long time. This could be in a week or two weeks. We could, this is not rocket science in terms of setting this up. So with that, I would suggest that what we ought to do is we ought to direct our staff to work with the city of Oxnard, using the conditions that are laid out by the Public Works Agency here. Direct our staff to meet with the city of Oxnard and use these conditions that are laid out here with these modifications. Strike Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation from the request that they take the liability, which doesn't make any sense, and be very clear, because I appreciated the persons, the representative of Oxnard saying, are you willing to do it? And he said, well, this allows these discussions to continue. Well, discussions could continue. We've had some discussions that have been continuing for ten years with people in terms of that. We've got a fish or cut bait here. So it should be very clear that we'll require that Oxnard take the liability for the operation and maintenance of the signal, also the liability for any lawsuits from accidents that are attributed to the non-warranted signal. Oxnard's got to do that. They're the one approving the development. They're the ones that are getting, and I would offer, if I could have that nice pointer back again, I would offer that all of the developer fees, et cetera, that came from here go to Oxnard, so that Oxnard can take care of the impacts on the roads and, you know, the signals and all of things. So if Oxnard getting all these developer fees from this, they ought to be able to handle that, and they, and Oxnard can, you know, address this a number of ways. So that's one, be real clear. So liability for operation and maintenance signal and for the accidents that come from that. And then the other negotiating point is Oxnard needs to take the road, and at a minimum, if they're not going to take the road, Oxnard has been unwilling to even sign the traffic mitigation agreement that says, when you have a whole lot of housing like this come in, we've worked out a traffic mitigation formula with all the cities in the county to say, how much should you pay so that the county can take care of the county roads that are impacted by that development? Oxnard hasn't signed that. So in the absence of signing this new agreement that would finally have Oxnard paying for the impacts on the road, or they can take the road, I think those should be the parameters that we have the negotiations under. So I would add, I would modify item three, get rid of Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation in the report. I would modify four, getting rid of Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation assuming the liability, and I would clarify number four to say liability for operation and maintenance, hundred percent cost of traffic signal at Victoria, and for the accident liability. And then five, to negotiate about whether Oxnard is willing to either take the road, pay the traffic mitigation fee, and Oxnard also has the option of simply cutting the road through the golf course, which strikes me as a pretty good common sense, smart growth kind of solution that protects everybody. So that's, that would be my motion.
Let me, I wanted to make a comment before you make a motion.
Okay, well, it's out there, so go ahead, and then we can get a second.
Supervisor Flynn?
I think the first thing of importance is to support the farmworker housing. I don't hear anyone up here who opposes that. We have to make that clear. I think most of the items that you mentioned are items that have been agreed to. The big item is the liability item. As far as the other agreement that you mentioned, the agreement that is, or the lack of an agreement is being discussed, that's in discussion phases, and that hopefully will come about in a resolution of that issue. But if we apply all the problems that you perceive we have with the city of Oxnard on this project, and that's kind of going a little bit too far, I think the main one is the liability. And if we could direct staff, and it says in number two, direct the Public Works Agency to negotiate a cooperative agreement, then the liability issue should be the main one to be negotiated. And I would hope that we could, we could do- And I would hope that we could do that. You know, we have, we, meaning the county, has a lot of issues with the city of Oxnard. We're putting in a major sewer project in El Rio, and that sewer project is expensive. And Oxnard has a hookup fee, which they're about to change, about to increase by about $2,000 per unit. We're attempting to get some cooperation there so we can build a sewer system, and we've already started it, and part of El Rio Strickland Track, that people will be able to afford. So there's a lot of negotiations going on here. I hope that we're not trying to solve all of the problems of the city just simply on this one particular issue. I think if the liability issue could be resolved, and certainly recommendation number two would allow that to be discussed and hopefully be resolved, and nothing happens until this comes back to the board. So that's my motion.
Well, I appreciate your comment, Supervisor Flynn, and I'm not attempting to try to solve all the problems, but I am suggesting that this traffic mitigation discussions with Oxnard have been going on for three years, and that if Oxnard would have at any point in time up till now done that, it wouldn't be an issue any longer. So I'm not trying to say that that has to happen, but that Oxnard has choices. That's one of the choices they could take, but we're not trying to say all the problems have to be solved. Oxnard has choices. They could take the road, they could do the traffic mitigation, they could give us a report, they could choose to build a street through the golf course. Any of those are options. So I agree with you. We don't want to take everything that goes on with Oxnard and say it has to be solved with this. But my point is, if those things were solved, then they would be solved at this point in time, and we might say what's going to happen, but what Oxnard is doing is building more and more housing while we don't have that agreement and just the problems just keep piling up. This is just one more example of that problem piling up. So I think I'd like to stay with my motion, and, but with the clarification, we're not trying to solve all of Oxnard's problems or require that.
I'll second for discussion.
You're seconding what?
Steve's, excuse me, Supervisor Bennett's motion.
I guess what I'm really concerned about here is the fact that there's not a requirement for this signal. It's a non-warranted signal, and, but all of a sudden, everybody wants it and wants to go against what is, you know, good traffic engineering, at least by the parameters set in the code. And Oxnard could have solved this problem without this whole discussion, so it seems to me bothersome that this board is being put in this position to, somebody's attempting to make us look like we don't support farmworker housing. We do, A, and everybody knows that we do. But this is farmworker housing that's going into a city, into an urbanized area, and it seems to me that the city could have solved this problem. I heard somebody say, oh, it's been six months. That's not my fault. This is the first time we've had it. So the hangup is somehow with the city, and I'm not angry with the city. I'm, you know, I happen to like those people. But they're putting us in an untenable position, and that seems to be the habit of some municipalities. And I'm going to be very honest about it. I understand, because we used to do it when I was on the city council. It's always the county can do this. But in this case, as much as I want this farmworker housing, I am not going to give premature approval for a signal I don't happen to believe should be approved anyway until and unless the negotiations continued and continue, and there is an acceptable agreement from the city or between the city and our department, that I can then say, yes, this agreement is correct, and yes, it goes in. I think the easiest way to solve this is for Oxnard to just accept the road. They've got more development out there waiting in the wings. So we're going to have this discussion more than once, and I think the reason we're having it now is precisely because it's farmworker housing, and it's easier for the board, for the city and the proponents to bring pressure on the board for that kind of a development than any other just residential development. So I seconded the motion, and I stay with my feeling that this can be worked out and should be worked out prior to any approvals.
Supervisor Flynn? Well, I agree that it should be worked out. What we could do is remove recommendation number one and simply take recommendation number two, which is direct the Public Works Agency to negotiate a cooperative agreement for the installation and maintenance of the traffic signal, knock off C E D C, and simply leave the city of Oxnard there. That would allow all the negotiations then to take place. But, you know, we say that, well, we got farmworker housing here, and we have a program here that uses that road and so forth. That's certainly not the fault of the people out here, is it? It's not their fault that this issue is like this. It's not the farmworker proponents of farmworker housing who are trying to push something and get something that, using the appeal of farmworker housing. It's not that at all. It's the fact that here's this little tiny project, right here, and it's really stopping government from cooperating. Public Works Directors, both the Director of Public Works and the Director of Roads, and Johnny Johnson, met and met and met on this issue and still haven't resolved it. So I just would be happier if we can just adopt number two and leave the negotiations up to the city of Oxnard and the Department of Public Works, and then bring it back.
Madam Chair?
Sir?
If I could respond, as you say, they've been meeting and meeting and meeting, and they have not reached an agreement. And I think that's because they haven't, this is the first time this has come to the board. I mean, last week was the first time I was, you know, some people say, we've been at this six months. First time I've been involved or informed of this at all, knowing that this is out there. If, maybe, if there's a tight timeline, this should have come to the board sooner so that you get the board direction. But if, in fact, they've been meeting and meeting and meeting and haven't gotten anywhere, then it's time for us to say, what are the parameters, what are the things that we have to have? Once that's a clear statement of the elected body, then our negotiators can go in and go, I mean, we've just settled, as Ms. Marshall pointed out here, we just settled a thing with the sheriff and the district attorney. It wasn't until they were clear what the board really had to have that things actually started to move. Now the board is identifying what we have to have. If we just say, oh, item two, and just say, and hopefully you'll figure out all the rest of it, obviously, they haven't up to this point in time. Now we're giving them clear direction that this is what you need to do, and Oxnard can decide they want to do this, they don't want to do this, and that's the appropriate, they're the decision-making body all along. They're the ones deciding to build that housing development and separate, you know, and have the golf course separating it and all that stuff. There are all kinds of things Oxnard could do to change this, and so we ought to make it clear, and then hope Oxnard will follow through, and we can end up with a win-win for everybody in that situation. But that's where the, so I don't think we should change our parameters, or negotiators won't have that specific direction from staff, I mean, from the board.
If I might, I'm going to support the motion, and I would, looking out and listening to the children in the audience, I would expect that all of this may not be as important to you as feeling that your families are safe and that you are safe, living in the housing to be developed, being supported by the programs, and feeling like you have support from the community. And I believe, hearing from every board member up here, that that's not the question that we certainly are familiar with and have years supported, for years supported prototype, and this board has taken strong positions and actually actions via ordinance to support farmworker housing. Unfortunately, you are caught in a bit of a middle here in the sense of what is the best design to provide safety for access for the residents who will be living on this property? And I haven't yet heard from Oxnard any reply to, was there even consideration for an alternative road that would take the residents on this property back through that new development as opposed to directing you out onto a very, very busy road? And even with the light, that is a very, very busy road. And with continued development by the communities around Victoria, it will continue to get busier. And even with lights, accidents happen. Even with lights, people make mistakes. And I know that you would feel that your children are first in your thinking for providing a safe environment for them, and if we can find and develop what is best to address that, it is incumbent on us and the leadership in Oxnard to work together to do that. And I say, too, that it doesn't mean this has to be months more delay. It really means that good people with the best intentions and the best minds and our technical expertise put a table together and get this resolved and get it back to the board. This is the first time that we've heard it, and this may sound like a pimple on a boil between a fight with the city of Oxnard. Yes, we have significant other issues that we've been working through with Oxnard, and I feel that, again, between the leaders, that we can continue to work through those. The negotiations between this board and any city in this county is not just with one board member, it is with the entire board. And it is through the board member and the CEO that we should be briefed early on enough that when something comes to us, it has been fully vetted, fully weighed in by our technical experts so that we feel that the decision we make is the best decision for the greater good of the county, both in the action specific to the project, but also for any precedent-setting actions that would come as a result of the board's decision. So I, clearly, I would want to have an answer from Oxnard as to was there consideration of the alternative road going through a golf course? I can name numerous in this county where roads, major roads, go through golf courses, Spanish Hills, Sterling Hills, et cetera, et cetera, and the golfers find their way around it, and it works, and, you know, it just really makes for an environment that everybody feels safe. So I'd like to know why that wasn't considered. And for Oxnard to take a position of no impact, and now they're, you know, frankly saying to the C E D C, you take on the liability of this, is just not good planning in the sense of a nonprofit organization that for years has done historically wonderful work in this county to put that ownership condition on them. So I would not support that. Other comments? Supervisor Parks first?
Thank you. I can support going forward with the signal if the city of Oxnard takes a hundred percent of the liability. And to me, that puts the ball back in their court. You can find a better way to do this, and going through the golf course might be that, maybe that the development around the golf course has gated community, is it? And so, you know, this may also be kind of an environmental justice issue, too. But I don't want to see the slowed in any way if we can avoid this process going forward so we can get the housing out there. And the idea of throwing out, let's get this negotiated with the traffic mitigation issue that's been longstanding for years, I think that might be something that might slow the process. So I would just ask that, in listing what we require, certainly we need the liability, but the issue of negotiating the traffic mitigation fee, that that be something for consideration but not a requirement?
And it's not a requirement, it's just one of the options that they could do to solve the problem. So it's not a requirement. They could say, no, we're not going to do traffic mitigation, but we're going to cut the road through here, or we're going to take the road. So it's just, I just want to get it on the table. It's just one of the options. It's not, it's not a requirement, all right? They don't have to, it's one of the options for them to talk about. I mean, quite frankly, if they take the road, they would be, you know, then they don't have to, they don't have to sign off on the traffic mitigation thing at all. So I just want to be clear, it's not, we're not saying they've got it solved. I'm just saying, I'm trying to create, the more options we create, the better chances we create for success as they go forward. If I could, since I have the microphone.
You know, I probably did ask to speak after her.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It seems to me, though, the conditions you're placing on this is, I don't know your motivations for sure, but you're going beyond what has to be done. It's my sense that the board's main concern is liability. Why couldn't we simply take Supervisor's Parks' idea that it'll be approved if the city of Oxnard takes the liability? That's the major issue. And that would give the city, then, maybe some motivation to say, maybe we'd better try something else. But that would be their decision to do that. And our decision would be simply, yes, we want the farmworker housing, we want to protect the home, the prototype for women, we want to make sure they're going to be safely treated. But in order to do that, and the argument is a good one, then the city has to take the liability. I would hope that we can do that. Let me just go on a little bit further. In the city of Oxnard, which I represent primarily, most of it, we have a lot of social problems. And the social problems really require cooperation in order to solve them. So I want to make sure that this is a sense of working together rather than loading a whole bunch of conditions on when really the liability is it, because I have to work with Sal Gonzalez. Can you stand up, Sal, please? I have to work with him a lot on finding homes for people to live in. People that come into my office, many of them from other districts, but come into my office and need someplace to work. He's always been so cooperative with that. Now, if we overload this with our comments, especially from you, Mr. Bennett, with conditions, then that kind of puts a barrier up between me and the city of Oxnard, and I have to work with them. I have to work with them. This is a negative, negative thing on them. I think Linda's Parks, Supervisor Parks, allows a little softer landing here, and it takes care of all the issues you've been talking about.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, if I may, I think, to bring this back down to what it is, it's just how are we going to plan for the traffic safety and the safety involved in this thing? And certainly, I, it's easy to get off on the emotional, on the warm and fuzzy, but that's not what this discussion is about. It's about the fact that this is a request for an unwarranted traffic signal. And Supervisor Flynn, I disagree that if the city takes the liability, we've solved most of the problems. Ongoing maintenance and operation of the signal, et cetera. But see, if we just go with number-
They've agreed to that. They've agreed to that.
Well, I know, but if we just go with number two, then that could possibly fall off of the radar screen, and we don't want it to. And so, I, at this point, am unwilling to change the direction that I believe this board should go. I think we can, historically, in every district, see times where the board made probably unwise choices due to pressure or whatever. And I don't want us to fall back into that. And so, I don't, once again, see this as slowing anything down. I see the negotiations now going forward with direction from the board to the negotiators, much like everything else that we've done, and I believe that it can be done quickly enough to resolve any of the issues with funding, et cetera, because because we now understand the issues, the board has given direction, and I believe this could be back to us very, very quickly. If there's an agreement with the city, the encroachment permits will come, et cetera. If there's something that's needed in the meantime that I'm unaware of, then I would ask Mr. Britt to let me know at this meeting what that is. If not, I believe we go forward, we negotiate quickly, we've got direction, and I believe that it, like other things, can be accomplished.
Let me just add one more point, that kind of the comment, unless I misunderstood you, Madam Chair, that I negotiated this? I didn't negotiate anything. All I said is, I'll bring this to the board and let the board decide. I didn't negotiate all these conditions here, like you seem to be inferring.
No, that wasn't my, my comment on that was, you made a comment that you're negotiating with Oxnard on the El Rio sewers issue and that, you know, the cooperation issue, and I can appreciate that. But in, anytime we're working with cities in our district where, when it comes to a policy question of the board, then that really has to be fleshed out totally to the board for the final resolution.
Let me just make my final comment. This is really government not working. Here we have- Here we have a group of relatively poor people, many of them very poor. Yes, I'll use the emotions. Sometimes, you know, you have to think cognitively, and you have to think emotionally with the heart. We just took this little spot of earth here and told the people that came, the poor women that came here and the farm workers, "We're not going to cooperate." That's, that's the way I read Mr. Bennett's motion, not cooperate. This is not the way government should work. Director of Public Works, Mr. Johnson, they, you know, they, it took a long time to get anyone to meet with Mr. Johnson, or Mr. Johnson to meet with someone. And I'm the guy that's being made to look pretty bad here. All I did was bring this to the board. I represent a lot of poor people. They came here today for the first time, many of them have ever been before a government body, and they've heard the elected people speak. I think it's an absolute shame what we did here today. We did not solve this problem.
Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion because it is essentially everything that is in the recommendation, except logically, we're taking out CEDC for potentially having to have the liability, something they certainly couldn't do. And then the only thing I see that's different is changing it to also give the option, if they don't follow the recommended conditions, we're also giving them the option of taking Victoria or cutting through the golf course. And as far as traffic mitigation, the funds are there, that's going to take care of this, and that's something we can look at too. But Supervisor Flynn, I see this as your, your recommendations going through and has another, another suggestion that says, "Look at, look at these other options." Not a requirement, but it is another suggestion. This is your recommendation, one through four, minus taking out CEDC from having liability. So I'm going to support it.
I know, I would, I agree with that. I would think those would have solved. Mr. Bennett had to go beyond those and even modify each one of those. What kind of government is that?
Again, I do see this as being essentially the exact same motion and taking out CEDC and also putting in a new option that hasn't been considered. So I'll support the motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I think we are ready to call a question, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to suggest that the very first time the board gets an issue, that if we offer to tweak it in any way, that suddenly we are failing to serve the poor people of Oxnard. I think that's an easy thing to say, but it, it's what you basically do in a straitjacketing government, to say, "We're not allowed to make, we're not allowed to offer anything, we just have to sit here and say yes, or else we're not, we're not supportive of poor people." I just, I completely reject that. I don't think that's good government, I don't think that's what people want us to do. I don't think they want us to succumb to short-term pressure and make long-term, you know, create long-term problems. So I appreciate the support Supervisor Parks has expressed and the other supervisors in going forward with this. I, I would think it would be, I think it would be interesting, so this is not part of the motion, I just want to offer this as a...
Oh, go ahead.
I think it would be interesting for us to, I think it would be interesting for us to hear from Oxnard about this road because, think of the, think of the safety advantages for everybody if there's this road. If you were, if you were there at the, at the site and you wanted to make a left on the Victoria, if instead you could go down to Gonzalez, you could oftentimes go down to Gonzalez and, let's say you wanted to go left on Victoria and then you wanted to go right on Gonzalez. You could instead go through the housing track and make a right-hand turn and avoid the left on Victoria, which we all admit is still going to have some issues with it because it's only a half-light. There's some tremendous advantages to this road, and if it, and if it bothers a gated community and the economic justice issue, I have a lot of trouble saying, "We have to go and leverage all of this issue on a, on this half-light on Victoria." But we refuse to talk about inconveniencing the golfers or inconveniencing the gated community. Why, I mean, if we talk about being in favor of poor people, why aren't we bringing up that? Why are we only saying, "The only way you can be in favor of poor people is to approve this without modification"?
Madam Chair, if I could just say one more thing.
Supervisor Bennett, are you concluded your comment?
Enough, yes, thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Let me, let me say, take a look at the first supervisory districts, how many low-cost housing projects you have around Ojai, for example. This is one that's going in, and it's going to go in. I think if, Board, Madam Chair, I think if we could continue this item for a week and have our Public Works people discuss with the Public Works people and the housing people of this, in the Cabrillo, with the city of Oxnard, and bring something back next week that we can take a look at. I think that would be a much softer approach. It wouldn't create the hard feelings that we're going to, we're going to have if this motion passes. So I, I make an amendment to the motion that we continue the item for a week, have Public Works report back to us next week, and discuss whatever comes out of these discussions.
There's an amendment put forth, motion in a second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That amendment fails. The motion that is on the floor that has received a second, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
And if I might just close this out to, to say to the city of Oxnard, "We appreciate your being here, and we ask you to take back," and certainly, the call from the board is, "We are all willing to put the best minds at the table to get this back to this board, whether it's a week or two weeks, but sooner than later, because we know that there's a very significant project waiting to move forward, waiting for those permits, and waiting to serve a community that does need housing, and appreciate the good work of leaders getting to the table to get this resolved as quickly as possible." And at that, yes?
And could we respect for the request that you come back with information about why the road to the residential community? Is there something, is there something we don't know about why that can't be done?
Mr. Bennett wants the road to go through the residential street. It's a major road, so think about it.
Okay, that concludes that item by the board.
I'm going to call a news conference, please, outside with any news media people.
It's a permit so we don't lose our funding, that's what it's all about. If we lose our funding, it's all activity, and that's what we do.
This item is over. The item is over. We'll move as quickly as Oxnard can answer our questions. The board agenda is complete. We do have closed session. I'd like to call the board into closed session.
Did they make a decision yet?
Yeah.
Wow.
The board's out from closed session, just for an announcement, then we'll be going back in to finish our closed session agenda and the announcement from county council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the matter of Donald Daniels, Stephanie McDonough at L versus the County of Ventura at L, United States District Court, Central District, case number CV 03-8861 FMCRZX, the Board has voted four to one to appeal the court's denial of the county's summary judgment motion on qualified immunity. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back in and finish closed session agenda. There won't be any further announcements?